Everybody.
Mayor Rosio Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Azar Juajardo. Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Here.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
And Commissioner Rita Flores.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hilda. Item 1B, Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation by Luis.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Father, thank you for every seat that has been filled here today. For each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room, we thank you. Only you truly know what we are setting out to accomplish today. We have an idea, a vision, hints, and daily instructions. We have talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you can see the perfect detail and end of every beginning, every project, every season, every life. Only you know what is ahead. Father, please guide us and help us through. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Luis. Yes, sir, Mayor Commissioners, I'd like to, if you don't indulge me, go out of order. I'd like to go to item 5B, Events of Interest on the City Manager's Reports. Chief Harvey, can you bring up the officer, please? Just to set it up real quick, Mayor Commissioners and for the public, every once in a while we get a real good, real good instance that happens. Part of being a good organization is recognizing those good things that happen in your organization. So Anna Lee's gonna read a letter from, from a police chief that'll set up the scenario here.
Hi, good afternoon. On August 18, 2020, Officer Carlos Castillejos of George West Police Department responded to the area of Highway 281 north of George West for a possible stolen vehicle. Upon arrival, Officer Castillejos located the vehicle abandoned on the side of the roadway. Officer Castillejos was able to locate a possible suspect walking not far from the vehicle. While attempting to detain the suspect, off-duty Officer Gerardo Gonzalez, Jr. of the Far Police Department stopped to assist Officer Castillejos. While attempting to detain the suspect, the suspect began fighting with Officer Castillejos and Officer Gonzalez. The suspect was able to grab Officer Castillejos' weapon and remove it from the holster during the struggle. Officer Castillejos and Officer Gonzalez did what they could to remove the weapon from the suspect's hands. Officer Gonzalez, fast thinking, helped to disable the weapon, which could have been used on either officer. Officer Gonzalez showed his true ability to think and react to a stressful situation, which I believe ultimately diffused a violent altercation. We at George West Police Department want to recognize Officer Gonzalez for his assistance and fast thinking that most likely saved our officers from a possible deadly interaction. Far Police Department should be proud to have Officer Gonzalez on their side, a true example of a police officer. Respectfully, Jimmy Loyah, interim Chief of Police, George West Police Department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to talk a little bit about Officer Gonzalez. He's, I wanted everyone to know that he's a Far Police Officer and that he did this above and beyond on his way to San Antonio with his wife. He just happened to see that happening and in his gut, I need to go, I need to go help him. And so because of your actions, you probably saved that officer's life. And the fact that you stopped says a lot about you. I have a couple of things for you that I want to give to you on behalf of George West and the Far Police Department and the City Commission. You have, of course, they sent you a nice patch and a nice coin. It's in here. This is probably the best one. It's from D and M Cleaners. Marty Moore gave you a year of free cleaning. This has some money to it, so be sure, let me know when you drop yours off so I can give you mine, too. And then this is in the same letter of recognition that Ms. Anna Lee just, just read. This is in a nice plaque for you, a nice frame. And then this is your heroism award, presented to you for your acts of heroism. Thank you so much for everything, Gonzalez. And thank you, Senator Lucio and Representative Munoz, also for being here today. Any words?
Yeah. First of all, I want to thank you guys for being here with me. It means a lot to me that you guys actually went out of your way and gave me this opportunity to be here with Chief Harvey and Chief Gonzalez, the whole Far Police Department. Yeah, like Chief said, it's just something that we're trained to do. I mean, at the end of the day, we're in line enforcement 24/7. And sometimes we, we think this is gonna happen, something simple, and at the end of the day, it just goes south real quick. But I just want to thank God for allowing me to be here and safe and just here, ready to work again. And thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Commission here in the All-American City of Far Texas. I'm so very, very pleased to come before you this afternoon along with my dear, dear friend and outstanding state representative that we're so fortunate to have here, the Honorable Sergio Munoz, Jr. A lot of things have gone through my mind. You know, my dad was a police officer for 30 years, actually deputy sheriff, chief office deputy, and grew up in a home. I was very fortunate that preached Americanism, patriotism, citizenship, and all the wonderful things that all of you here represent, Chief, and members of this, this great organization, this great police department. I'm glad to be here at this meeting along with my, my good friend Sergio Munoz, Jr. To honor the courage and bravery of Far Police Officer Gerardo Gonzalez, Jr., we are here to recognize and commend the selflessness he demonstrated by assisting a fellow police officer while off duty, even when it meant sacrificing his own safety. And that's biblical, as all of you well know. Officer Gonzalez, you are a great example of courage and honesty and selflessness, and we thank you for bringing honor to Far and the region with your brave reaction. You demonstrated what public service is all about, helping others. And for that reason, I would like to recognize you today with a Texas flag in honor of your heroism and a resolution which I will be passing during the upcoming legislative session so it can go into the Texas archives as part of Texas history. So your great, great grandchildren can someday look you up and say, that was my grandpa. I commend you for your fast thinking and quick response, which most likely saved your fellow police officer's life, as was stated by their own correspondence. And even when that police officer was not from your own department, you demonstrated that we are all in this together and that we are one country, one state, one family, under God. As we continue to face the challenges, challenging situations, we must remember that the Bible tells us to, quote, "Be strong and of good courage. Do not fear, nor be afraid of them; for the Lord your God, he is the one who goes with you. He will not leave you, nor forsake you." Officer Gonzalez, thank you for your outstanding service and for sacrificing your own safety to protect the people of our great state. We are very, very proud of you. May God bless you and know that you are, in all our prayers, all of us, again, pray together. We are united in faith, and I want to thank the City Commission because, quite frankly, Mayor and Commissioners and those leaders of this great community, the people that work in this great community are a reflection of your leadership. I am sold on that because I've never seen such a proactive, Bobby and all of you demonstrate what truly is what's important for the people to see, your type of leadership, your lead through example. And this officer here, quite frankly, wants to be a proud member of your organization, your family, and he is. And today, we, we acknowledge his great bravery. Thank you.
And thank you, Mayor, City Commission, as well, for giving me the opportunity to be with you this afternoon. And I just want to echo what the Senator mentioned in the sense of honoring the brave efforts, not only of Officer Gonzalez, but it's a reminder of the values and principles that he has with him, not only while he's working here in the city of Far, but that go with him day in and day out. And I know those principles and values that are instilled by the Mayor and the City Commission in every organization and everybody who works here within the city. So I want to say congratulations and thank you to him as well. Definitely, his efforts will not go unnoticed. As the Senator mentioned, we extend the invitation to join us in Austin, and we hope that you can join us as well because I think what he did that day needs to be known, not only to the people in the Valley, but throughout the state and really throughout the nation in terms of just helping one another and making sure that everybody is safe. So thank you very much, Officer Gonzalez. Thank you for your brave efforts. May God bless you, and may God continue to bless each and every one of you here and your families. Thank you.
Before you guys sit down, I want to make a couple of comments. First and foremost, Sergio, can you come back real quick? Thank you, everybody, for showing up today. It's a very important day today, but I wanted to thank you and offer a condolences on behalf of the City of Far. Your father, great leader, great man in many aspects, and great father. And we're here to say thank you. Thank you for sharing him with us. He sacrificed his time away from his family, but he made a big difference in many people, especially in this region. And we just want you to know, from, from our hearts here, face to face to tell you, we're deeply sorry for your loss. And we want to thank you and your family for allowing you to serve in public service.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Chief. What do you think?
Yes, last one. Didn't know if anybody had a...
Go ahead, the Commissioner will answer that.
We'll wait.
We have a little message from someone you might know. I don't know. Maybe we'll see.
Officer Gerardo Gonzalez from Far Texas, its fellow officer Dean Kane from Pocatello, Idaho, and also sheriff deputy in Frederick County, Virginia. My friend, you are a hero. I played a hero on television. I joined the force to stand alongside heroes like you, my friend. So what am I talking about? Well, your police chief, Andy Harvey, made it very clear to me that you, you were off duty and you helped an officer with another agency, struggling with a suspect. That's what you do. Good guys help out. That's what sheepdogs do. Bad guy took the officer's weapon. Officer Gonzalez, you grabbed his hand, the bad guy's hand, you dropped the magazine, you fired the final round in a safe direction. I don't know what that direction would be, but you did it, and that's awesome. That means you ended the threat right there, my friend. And you are receiving the heroism award because you are a true hero. I only hope that if I were in the same position, I would be able to act as heroically as you did, Officer Gonzalez. Congratulations to you. I'm sure that other officer thanks you profusely. And the bad guy, he's not so happy. Cheers to you. You're a hero, my friend. From one fake hero to a real hero. Cheers.
Officer Gonzalez, on behalf of the City Commission, I'm going to speak, and I'm sure they have commentary, they can jump in, but on behalf of the City Commission and Mayor's Office, very proud, as always we have been, of all our officers at City of Far. But especially today, as you mentioned, I mean, that was Superman, but the real Superman are the primary responders, especially people like you, who every day, charge. You don't run away, you charge towards danger, putting your life on the line, like every other primary responder that we have. Dr. Caballero is a primary responder, and he himself puts himself at risk with COVID-19. But you did it, showing example of what our humanity can be. You demonstrate what is in the best of all of us. And that makes us very proud because you didn't, you weren't prompted to do it, you weren't paid to do it, you just did it because you knew it was the right thing to do for a fellow human being. You are truly your brother's keeper. And for that, I thank you personally for your sacrifice and for you, you know, making a difference in somebody's life. So thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yes, Officer Gonzalez, I just wanted to say thank you for serving here. I've been here in the community a little bit longer than most, except for Medina, who's been on and off. Seen some great people, great officers. I know a lot of great officers that have, that served, that are serving or have served here in the city of Far. But what you did exemplifies what a true officer is. You didn't think twice about what you were doing. You went because that's your job. And to me, like she was saying, you are a hero. And especially when I hear it from somebody in the community, because when I found out about it, Marty Moore's the one that, he called me. He said, hey, Bobby, did you know, hey, you guys, you know you have a hero there in the city of Far? And I thought, well, I thought it was me, but I guess it's not anymore. And he explained to me what happened. So I went by the cleaners and me and him were talking. And he said, look, Bobby, I want to do something for him. Obviously, he honored you with a full year of cleaning your uniforms. And most of all, he was like, Bobby, you know, in the time, the way our situation is right now with, you know, all this Antifa, Black Lives Matter, and all this stuff that's going on, we do have true officers. The majority of all the officers are great officers. There's always going to be one or two bad apples in every sack. But the majority of our officers, as yourself, exemplify what police departments are about. So when people want to go defund the police departments throughout, you know, there's been several, which is ridiculous because you know what? You guys, at the end of the day, when they need something, we're the first person to call. Call the police to go help them. And I know you have shown that you don't need to be called. You move when an action needs to be delivered without anybody calling. So that's what separates you from all the people that want to try to defund. You're the reason why we are so proud of our police department here in Far. And Chief, congratulations. The man of the hour, hero in the city of Far. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Officer Gonzalez, I want to say thank you for your heroism. You've given a lot of the community because you want to know that the example that you give in other cities or on the way you go to San Antonio, you've shown what you do in the city of Far. Not just the people here in Far, but also the people around you. And when a person like you does what you do when you're not paid, it means a lot. It means that it's in your heart. And that's very important. Also, I'm sure there are many officials, apart from Officer Gonzalez, official Gonzalez, who have done things that are valuable, not just that we have to thank you for your heroism, Officer Gonzalez, for what he's done, and that he's a model of a heart. And I want to say thank you.
Yes. Can you come up here and take a picture with you? Ready, three, two, one. One more, one more. Three, two, one.
Thank you again, Senator Lucio and Representative Munoz, for being here. Mayor and City Commission, I wanted to introduce our two newest officers, right? It's good to get some new blood into our department.
That's right.
These guys with gray hair, they're slower or not. I want to get some young blood. So we got some young people wanting to be part of Far PD, and I want to introduce them to you.
Sure.
And, and by the way, we have eight more in the police academy right now.
Wow.
So we're going to see an infusion of some young, new, like I said, new blood. And that's pretty exciting for the police department. So coming up, Osvaldo and Luis, say a few words.
Good afternoon. My name is Osvaldo Mateo, and I'm honored to serve the city and serve like against a, a part of officers like Gonzalez. And thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens. So thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Luis Martinez. I'm honored to work for the city of Far. I want to thank the city of Far Commission for the opportunity. And I look forward to working with the community and maybe one day I could be like Officer Gonzalez.
That's right. Yes, you can. Well, welcome. Congratulations. We're glad you're here.
Thank you, everybody. Good job. Back to regular agenda, go back to item 2A, proclamation, proclaiming a national day of remembrance for murdered victims. Mayor?
Whereas the National Parents of Murdered Children Act, acronym POMC, established September 25th, as the national day of remembrance of murdered victims as a result of unanimously passed resolution by the US Senate, October 16, 2007, and the US House of Representatives on May 14, 2007. And whereas the National Parents of Murdered Children believes that honoring the memory of victims who have been killed by violence and acknowledging the resulting long-term trauma for families, communities, and the nation is an important way of promoting public awareness and remembering our loved ones. And whereas in 2019, there were an estimated 16,973 homicides nationwide, of which the Rio Grande Valley experienced 38 homicides, and over 380 close relatives were affected, far higher than the number of direct homicide victims. And whereas survivors of homicide victims transform their pain and anger into power and action by honoring the memory of their loved ones impacted by homicide through leadership, grief support, advocacy, survivors, and reducing violence and promoting prevention and policy change on a local, state, and national level. And whereas, we urge all citizens of Far and in Idaho County to join the live virtual eighth annual candlelight vigil, remember the past, treasure the present, embrace the future, to be held at Jose Pepes Salinas Recreation Center Technology Conference Room from 7:00 PM to 8:15 PM, and take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Far, Texas, by virtue of authority vested in me and on behalf of the Mayor's Office and City Commission, do hereby proclaim the 25th day of September, 2020 as National Day of Remembrance for Murdered Victims. In witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Far to be affixed on the 8th day of September, 2020.
Okay, is there somebody here?
Thank you, Mayor, City Commissioners, members of the, the city, and other guests, distinguished guests that are present. Like COVID-19, this is probably the first time in eight years. In three days, it will be my, my brother's eightieth anniversary. And it feels like it happened yesterday. And under your leadership, Mayor, and other members of the council, since day one, you have embraced this remembrance. It's very important. Not only do we remember the victims that are any kind of victims of act, of act of violence, but also the police officers that were killed in July 11th here in the city of Far, I mean, excuse me, city of McAllen. And certainly other, Deputy Moseas the year before that and Speedy Esposito from Mission. It's important for us to value the human life, first and foremost. We're not here to judge. And, and that's why we do what we do, is that every member of our society is important, no matter what walks of life they come. And so having the leadership and the foresight that you have provided me and provided the organization to continue providing this essential candlelight vigils is very important. So COVID-19 has really affected us. My, you know, my victims are very elderly, and so we got to take the, the initiative of being virtual, just like everybody else in school. So this day, you know, it's very important for us to remember the past, treasure the present, and embrace the future. And I will leave you with, with this, right, that it gives us the biblical proportion that gives us our sanity to continue moving forward and pushing with this delegate when we talk about grief, the ongoing grief, a grief like no other. The scripture tells us that he gives us beauty before ashes, a strength for fear, and gladness for mourning, and peace for the despair. And that's why we do what we do. And so we got to value every human life that we lose because of violence. And like the mayor said, 16,900 is too many. One is too many. So we got to do some prevention education awareness out there, trying to prevent this. But on behalf of my board and 850 victims that I have served since 2012, I thank you for your opportunity and for the leadership to continue this fight together.
Now, thank you, Robert. We'll go ahead and take a photo with you, Robert. If you want to come up here. Ready, three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Okay.
Thank you. One, two, shot, shot, shot. Good job. Thank you.
So we can just slide over a little bit, right? Right. Just like down, but we're not, we're not center. A little bit more. Should be good. Ready, three, two, one. One more, one more. Three, two, one. There we go.
There we go. Right here, three, two, one, one more, one more, three, two, one.
Thank you Mayor Commissioners, we got one more proclamation, proclamation two B.
Somebody here for this?
Uh, yes sir, Tropical Smoothie.
Where are they?
Everything?
Oh, great, coming up sir.
Proclamation proclaiming Tropical Smoothie Cafe Day.
Wonderful, welcome sir. So, whereas Tropical Smoothie Cafe was founded in nineteen ninety-seven in Tallahassee, Florida and now operates more than six hundred locations nationwide. And whereas Tropical Smoothie Cafe is a leading fast casual cafe concept known for its better for you food and smoothies with a tropical twist. And whereas Tropical Smoothie Cafe is guided by the belief that when you eat better, you feel better and when you feel better, all is better. I agree with you. And whereas Tropical Smoothie Cafe's mission is to inspire a healthier lifestyle by serving amazing food and smoothies with a bit of tropical fun. And whereas Tropical Smoothie Cafe will celebrate and join in the commitment to bringing continued excellence to the FAR area with week-long giveaways and special offers to honor the customers who allow Tropical Smoothie Cafe to maintain its success. And whereas the FAR location unveiled its new restaurant to the community on August nineteenth of twenty twenty. And therefore I, Ambrosio Nandis, Mayor of the city of FAR, text us by virtue vested in me on behalf of the mayor and entire city commission do hereby proclaim September eighth, twenty twenty as Tropical Smoothie Cafe Day. And winters, I, and winters whereof, I hereby am to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of FAR to be affixed on the eighth day of September twenty twenty. Sir, do you want to say any few words?
Thank you, thank, I'd like to thank the mayor and the commissioners as well, as we go ahead and open up our new location, we want to go ahead and inspire a healthier lifestyle because when you eat better, you feel better and when you feel better, all is better. We want to go ahead and promote that always and we want to go ahead and instill that into the community and I'd like to go ahead and thank you guys again.
Yes, absolutely, so, yeah, you wanna come up here young, young man? You look, you look like my son. Ready, three, two, one, one more, one more, three, two, one. Thank you.
Okay Mayor, Mr. Mayor's city commissioners, thank you. Item three, public testimony, anybody sign up Hilda? None? Thank you, public hearings on development services cases, anybody sign up? None? Ma'am? Item number five, city engineers reports, correction city manager reports, five A city engineers reports in your packet, all projects are pretty much on time, is there any questions city engineers in the audience?
That was my number one question, we're on time, right?
Yes sir, five B, city events of interest, we did the police department, I got one more for you all. We are doing our last efforts for the census, we want to get as many people as we can counted. In that last effort, we are offering free barbecue to the public. If you fill out your twenty twenty census on Saturday, September twelfth at Development and Research Center at eight fifty West Dicker Road, also Saturday, September nineteenth at the FAR Event Center, three thousand North Cage, and the Saturday, September twenty-sixth, back at Development Research Center, eight fifty West Dicker Road. Come be counted, you come, you get a free barbecue combo sandwich. Those are the last three dates, so, show up, you want to get counted and get free food. That's all I have, city manager reports, back to regular agenda, consent agenda, all items are considered routine and non-controversial and can be enacted in one motion, so you so.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you, ordinance is resolution seven, seven, eight, consideration action if any on ordinance regulating electioneering on city-owned or city-controlled property, first reading. Yes sir, what we wanted to do is, the law says we cannot stop electioneering, which is the, the right of the people to, to push who they want to vote for, but we can control it, we can regulate time, place, and manner. We want to make it a little more orderly in the city of FAR, so once you get on city property, i.e. the parking lot, once you drive into a parking lot, the electioneering cannot happen, they can electioneer on the sidewalk, which is public right-of-way, pretty much that's where they can do it, they can allow tents all day long, all night long, whenever it's going on, they just cannot into the parking lot. If you want to go get information on the candidate, you approach the, the candidate's camp, you can get your information.
So, just, so I'm clear, that means those, when I go vote, nobody's gonna be stopping me from going to vote, trying to give me a card or, like in Las Vegas downtown or something, nobody's gonna be, I can freely go vote and come back out.
Yes sir.
Is that what you're saying?
Once you get the parking lot, it's a safe zone.
Okay.
Need a motion? Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you, seven B, consideration action if any on resolution requesting authorization, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, just.
Are we approving it on the first reading? No, sir, this is the first reading. Okay, that's all I want to know.
Yes sir.
First of three, yes sir. Seven B, consideration action if any on resolution requesting authorization from Texas Department Transportation to close FM thirty-four sixty-one, which is Nolan Loop, from Mayor Nate sixty-nine Central, which is I sixty-nine C, to Veterans Boulevard on Wednesday, November eleventh, twenty twenty for the Veterans Day fireworks display. Yes sir, as you know, we're expanding our fireworks display that we did from fourth of July from one to two locations. This is the second location, we bought ten acres next to Plaza Sports Center on East Nolan Loop. For the safety of the public, we want to shut down the road while we're doing the fireworks show, so this is what this is for.
Move for approval.
Second.
No, are we, are you gonna have two sites or one site?
We're gonna have two sites, yes sir.
And where's the second site?
The second site is gonna be on the floodway underneath the High Water Bridge in South Park.
Okay, and we're gonna post the time and date because I'm, I'm sure they're gonna be at the same time or?
Uh, they're gonna be at the same time, I believe, yes sir.
Okay. Any, any further discussion? Was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
And we will have one more agenda item, next meeting on the same item but for the south side. Apologies. Seven C, consideration action if any on resolution declaring computer equipment as surplus for the city of FAR first responders' drive-through. Yes sir, I request a no action on this item, we're gonna bring it back to you all. Seven D, consideration action, or the acceleration action if any on resolution adopting procedures for procurement, management, and administration of engineering and design-related consult services for federally funded highway programs. Yes sir, in order to retain our eligibility to receive federal funds for transportation projects, we have to adopt the procurement policies that the federal government has. These are being incorporated to our own policies and we need to follow, staffs recommend approval, so move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Yes sir. Eight E, consideration action if any on resolution appointing, reappointing two members to the FAR Memorial Library Advisory Board. Yes sir, Ida Escobar is the current member and the ex-official member is Commissioner Juárez. The current member wishes to be reappointed, I don't know if they reached out to the commissioner or not, if he wishes to be reappointed or not.
And that's item seven E, correct?
That's seven E, yes sir.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Okay, yes sir, eight A, consideration and appropriate action to recognize the FAR Police Officers Association as the majority bargaining agent for the city of FAR law enforcement pursuant to section one seventy-four point one oh two Texas Local Government Code and the election outcome certified by the American Arbitration Association. Yes sir, remember a couple of meetings ago, the question was called is who has the right to bargain for the PD officers in the collective bargaining sessions? There was a question called who had the, the majority? Staff recommended that the, they go through arbitration association and get an election, they did. FAR Police Officers Association, FAR Police Officers Association came out the winners and staffs recommended that we recognize them as the bargaining agent. So move.
Second.
Counselor, you're, you're good with this?
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you, eight B, consideration action if any on strategic framework, mission, vision, values, and strategic goals for the city of FAR. Yes sir, it's good practice, every year we bring you our mission, vision, values, and strategic goals. Staff is recommending to readopt them as they are, although I do want to work on them to shorten them up and make them more, I guess, user-friendly. They're a little long right now, I want to shorten them up so people can remember them a lot. But for this, for this go-around, we, we, staff's recommending to readopt them, so move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you, eight C, we'll discuss in executive session. Nine A, consideration action defending and authorizing city manager to purchase fourteen pur, purro lighting, sensory dual light, mobile UV lights for the emergency management from Granger through Texmus pricing in the amount of two hundred and sixty-two thousand four ninety-two dollars and fifty cents utilizing CARES funding. Yes sir, this was part of the stuff we, part of the budget we submitted for the CARES funding. This is several, this is one phase of several parts to get our buildings up in order and to protect against COVID.
Great.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes Commissioner, yeah.
Where are you gonna locate these UV lights?
Uh, they are portable lights commissioners, they're gonna be going from building to building and room to room.
So how often are you gonna be moving them or what?
Uh, don't know the schedule yet, I don't know if, have you worked out a schedule yet as far as how long?
I haven't worked out a schedule, there's actually fourteen, so we'll have almost one in every building and it takes thirty minutes to do each room.
Are these the ones they use in the hospital, the vertical ones that go on?
Affirmative, yes sir, they, they, they're mobile, mobile.
Yeah.
And they plug them in, it covers two hundred and eighty-eight square feet and it takes thirty minutes and then they move to the next.
Thirty minutes to sanitize and then you move it on, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you, contracts and agreements, ten A, consideration action if any on inter-local cooperation agreement with the city of West Coast, West Coast to provide animal sheltering services. Yes sir, this is a, a one-year extension, we did go with them, I believe, last year, the year before. We did go from Palm Valley, this is a lot more economical and we get more, better service out of it, staffs recommend to read the contract.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you, ten B, consideration action if any on inter-local cooperation agreement with Idalo County Drainage District Number One, Idalo County Irrigation District Number Two, and the city of FAR. Yes sir, part of the bond projects with the county and the ultimate decision from the city commission to fix the drainage in the south side. If you remember on the south side of town, as part of the drainage districts, bond project, there's a combination of, of ditches, there's a irrigation district running side by side with an irrigation ditch, inside-city right-of-way and utility utilities are in there. The plan is to get rid of both ditches and make one huge ditch to accommodate more volume. That's what the inter-local does, allows all the three parties to work together. We are gonna have to relocate some utilities, we did include in the, in the interlocal that we will reimburse by the bond money for utility relocation.
Okay, you're good.
Second.
Any discussion, Omar your?
Yes, this is specifically about project seventeen. Uh, on the west side of Cage, where our utilities are in conflict, so, you know, making sure that we get reimbursed for that.
Okay, and, and Elan or you, where are we on the FAR drain?
On the FAR drain, we issued the notice to proceed August tenth, so it's been about a month of actual construction, they're moving along pretty good, they, they finished some ditches in the south, now they moved over to the north, they're on schedule, it's about thirty per, ninety days to complete, so we're a third of the way.
So all city FAR drains will be updated?
Correct, all the, all the city FAR drains that had excess right-of-way to widen will be widened.
To increase capacity, to get the water.
Correct, to, to increase the, the capacity, storage, and improve, mitigate any flooding.
Great, and we're still waiting on the county to start.
Correct. Out of the three projects that the counties bid out, I believe they started on, on one or two, so they're still, we're, we're, we're ahead of them right now.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you, item ten C, consideration action if any on contract with Hollis Rutledge and Associates, Inc. for lobbying services.
Move for approval.
Yes sir, this is, staffs recommend to not. I'm joking. Where's Hollis? Yes sir, same terms as the last contract, staffs recommend approval.
Second.
We have a first and a second, all right. Any discussion?
Aye.
Hollis?
Yes sir.
Any, any points you want to say or words of wisdom?
Thank you all very much, again, through your confidence, I've worked very hard, in conjunction with Cynthia Rasa, she puts me online every day and she's, she's, she's an individual and enjoying working with all of your staff and Cynthia.
Well, you're doing exceptional job sir, thank you, thank you for your service. Okay, any other discussion? Always all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you, ten D, consideration action if any on advertising with inbound logistics for fifty thousand dollars for twelve months. Yes sir, this is a renewal contract that's gone by the bridge board, this I believe was our third year, Luis?
Actually like our fourth, fifth year.
Fourth year, I'm sorry. Yes sir, staffs recommend approval.
Okay.
To approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you, ten E, consideration action if any on award of contract for wastewater treatment plant oxidation ditch number two and the electrical improvements project phase one, project number nineteen twenty sixty-one, five eight seven, C zero zero two dash two four two. Yes sir, staff is recommending, or correction, the project engineer Corolo is recommending Ferguson Enterprises in the amount of one million sixty-five thousand dollars.
Move for approval.
Second.
Is this the first time we see this or is this, did this get redone?
Oh sir, it's the first time we see this.
Time, right? Because I don't remember seeing this, okay, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Ten F, consideration action if any on acceptance of H-back building automated system controls for police department and memorial library as complete and authorizing the release of retainage to Johnson Controls, Inc., project number eighteen nineteen oh one, five one two, C zero one three, zero zero one. Yes sir, the project is finally complete, I believe all we're lacking is a little bit of training, we're authorized, we're requesting to release the retainage in the amount of twenty-three thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty cents. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you, ten G, consideration action if any authorizing city manager to extend the supply contract with Martin Product Sales, DBA Martin Asphalt Company for the purchase and delivery of prime coat MC thirty and R two fifty tech coat. Yes sir, this is the third year of a three-year contract renewal, same, same dollar amount, staffs recommend approval.
Okay. Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you, consideration action if any authorizing city manager to extend the supply contract for Core and Main LP for the purchase and delivery of RCP, manholes and inlets. Yes sir, this is a company at McAllen, same terms as the last one, this is also the third year of a three-year renewal.
Correct.
Have to recommend approval.
Okay.
To approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Yes sir, consideration action if any, correction, uh, Jake, uh, J, ten J, consideration action if any, authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter a contract with GDJ Engineering for technical assistance for the MPO, Rio Grande Valley MPO, funding year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, transportation alternative set aside project application. Yes sir, what this is, this is formerly the traditional TAP program. We are requesting to do sidewalks and a, and a small trail down I Road and then up east on Military Highway. The reason we want to farm this out is GDJ is already on board for all the MPO projects, they know the projects, they know the system very well, and the deadline to submit for this one is August twenty-third of this year. So a little over a month, we gotta get the, the project out.
And this is project ten I, correct?
Ten I, yes sir, I'm sorry, I couldn't.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, thank you.
Thank you, ten J, consideration action if any authorizing city manager to extend, is there a cat somewhere, phone?
Who's?
Oh, somebody's phone.
Oh, that's what it is?
Hold on a second. Can you turn your kitty cat down there? We all like pets and all, but not, not, not now.
Thought we had him stuck in the roof or something.
Okay.
Okay, ten J, consideration action if any authorizing city manager to extend master service agreement for construction material testing and geotech services with the geotechnical firms currently on the city of FAR's rotation list. Yes sir, as you know, this is a master list we have for geotech and for material testing. There's only a few companies out there, they're already on our list, the prices are very good, we want to extend the master service agreement for another year, or correct, another two years. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you, ten K, consideration action if any authorizing city manager to extend the supply contract with L and R Precast Concrete Works Incorporated for the purchase and delivery of RCP, manholes and inlets. Yes sir, this is another one-year extension under the same terms, staffs recommend approval. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Yes sir, ten L, consideration action if any authorizing city manager to amend the construction manager at risk contract to include the FAR North multi-use facility. Yes sir, we have a deadline of April of twenty twenty-one to get this out. Uh, we want to take off some of the other projects that didn't happen to fruition this year and kick them back a year and get this project into the construction manager at risk current contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. In accordance with section five five one point zero seven one to five five one point zero eight seven of the Texas Government Code, the Far Board of Commissioners should by giving notice, it is convenient to executive session to discuss the items listed in the public portion of the meeting agenda, the time now being six twenty-two.
Yes, sir.
Cindy, you're gonna be putting it up on the website, what we chose?
Cindy.
Yeah, Cindy. No, no, I'm asking, are you gonna be putting it up on?
Is she gonna show it now?
Oh, you can, yeah, you can show it now.
Yeah, we gotta vote on it.
Yeah, you want to bring up the winner?
So back to, um.
Where does she need to stand so people can see it?
Right here. Once, once we make the announcement.
Okay.
So back to, uh, seven C.
Eight.
Eight?
Eight C.
Eight C.
Eight C.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Eight C, you're right. Consideration action, if any, on acceptance of official City of Far flag. There was two flags, flag one and flag two. This is categorized as flag one. This is what we're recommending.
Move for approval. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you, everybody.
Second.
Hey, you all got your coins right?
Yes, it's right here.
We can do it right now. Hey, can we take a picture with the flag real quick?